This conference will now be recorded.
The houses aren't at risk, it's the redevelopment that we're talking about here when those houses do go away, if they do. You know, because if somebody wanted to, if somebody wanted to take down one of those nice houses on that block, they'd have to still go to the Historic Preservation Commission and there's no way you guys are gonna say, "Yeah, this perfectly nice house, let's, you know, remove it." If, you know, does that make sense where I'm coming from? I think, I think my-
Yes, I, you know, like I said, I think you're the voice of the future and we're not necessarily the voice of the future, our commission, which is fine. I mean, you know-
I think he's the voice of a possible future.
Well, okay, all right. Well, the only one that's in front of us right now, you know.
I just don't, I just don't like it when it's presented before us as if the choices already been made and it's already been decided for us. I mean, our job on the Historic Commission is to preserve the history of our town and the history of our town runs along that street. And there's, I just, I just don't want to go into this and for him to say, "All houses are gonna fall down eventually," you know, "What's, what's the big deal really?" Well, that's kinda why we're here, because we wanna try to preserve these houses and for us, it kind of is a big deal. I mean, there's, there was something about driving down that street from the bridge and you see all those nice beautiful homes and then, you know, it's starting to be commercialized. For me, I'm just, I don't know.
I, I wanna clarify, I wanna clarify, I actually appreciate the homes too. I, you know, I, I live here, I grew up here, the houses have been here the whole time, obviously. I've been here, they were here for, you know, 75 years before I was born. I appreciate the homes too. The one that we're talking, well, my project is on a property that the home has already, I mean, I've fixed, I've fixed, actually fixed a couple of homes that were 100 years old and I, it's, that home is very, in very bad condition. So, you know, I purchased the property based on the value of the project that I'm proposing and I strongly feel that the development of the downtown core, like it's talked about in the code, is, you know, it's happening, we're, it, we're, we're there right now. And, you know, I, I'd like to be a part of it, I'd like to make, I'd like to make it fit with the neighborhood that's there because I know that those houses are still gonna be on that block for a long time to come. I, you know, when talking with Jennifer, we both agree, or, I mean, she can nod her head along if she wants, but we seem to agree that the building right to the, you know, to the build to line, the, the zero setback would be bad for that block. Fred's proposed in option two here, that he gave you guys, to change the code to, so that the commission could allow me to do a setback with the building so that it fits the neighborhood better and then also having building articulations and such and having a residential appearance, you know. Those, I, you know, that's what I want to do, I wanna work with everybody on it too, I wanna get to that point, but I just wanna reiterate that I feel that the commercial, that's the next block in the commercial core of Independence. And, you know, across the street, we have an apartment complex going in, we have the walk path that goes down to the park, we have the, you know, we have the building that I'm standing in, it's a very large scale brick building. Across the street, there's a large development proposed. I know not everybody, it's not official that something's happening there, but that's not in the residential overlay either, it's gonna be commercial most likely. You know, that's, that's, I don't, I don't wanna be the, I don't wanna be the enemy of the whole thing, I just feel really strongly, I haven't been able to, I haven't been able to wrap my head around the idea that the future development of that block is gonna be residential, because I don't feel like it makes sense.
You really made me sad.
But what about, could we think about maybe, the reason I, option two starts with the first word, it's remove. Option three is, starts with the first word, keep. What if we had option five and basically we took keep from option three and then took the rest of option two? In other words, have a new option and we, see, I, losing anything from the, from the, from the zone to remove anything, I think, really bothers me. If we kept it and changed then, based on what you have, section C, Fred, that you put under option two, and would that be doable?
Can I have a question too, when you're finished, Fred?
Um, oh, I was trying to get to it again, it's, it's right in front of me too. So, the problem with that is just the way that the code is structured right now, you can see that option two, when it removes the half block entirely, that would then put it into the Commercial Design Review Standards. And so, that's why the language is getting tweaked as it is there, that's in the Commercial Section, so it would remove it from the Historic Residential Overlay Zone and then it would be reviewed under the Commercial Design Standard and that language would be applied as it is, as it relates to the Commercial Design Standards. Option three, the language stays in the Historic Residential Overlay, but it just makes the residential set, the setback requirement a little more flexible than the current language. You can see, right there, right now, it just talks about that it has to match the setbacks of the neighboring structures, period, that's what it says. This would allow a little more flexibility to the setbacks and it says that you may extend in front of the, the, the front set, that, that, because the idea is if the buildings are, right here, you draw a line, right, and you, then you set the next building at that same setback, this would sort of allow some additional flexibility so it wasn't so prescriptive that, yeah, you have to meet that line.
Well, basically, what I'm talking about is option three says to keep it, okay, to keep the half a block. Option two says to remove it, okay? So, I'm, what I'm saying is, you know, to keep it, to keep the properties there, that's what I'm talking about.
And that's option three, Ann?
Well, I'm right, but I mean, could we take some of what section C and put that in option, section C under option two and put that in option three?
So, add additional language to C, Ann?
Well, um, maybe, you know, it says the development complements its surrounding neighborhood development patterns and then the front doors oriented to the street, put those things under option three, under, but we keep it in, so you keep the property.
The Historic Residential Overlay Zone has those standards. It already, they're already in there. So, the base, the only basic thing that's changing, um, both of those, both of that language just is trying to tweak how the, how the setback is talked about, just to allow some additional flexibility and the potential setback.
Curtis?
Okay, so, I think the consensus among the commission is, the first two options are not a consideration. Is everybody in agreement?
Agreed, yes.
Okay, so, we're looking at keeping the overlay either as it is or making a slight tweak to the language.
Right.
Is there any, kind of just to get a consensus, is there anyone that thinks the language should be tweaked?
Um, I'm leaning that way, based on what Mr. Harris is talking about.
So, Ann, and now, I have learned so much more about code since Mr. Harris bought this property than I ever cared to know, not my, this is not my jam at all, I'd much rather be taking care of my students. But I read through section 59.80 and, of the Historic Preservation Code and all these things, and, and it says right in here, this, this code that we already have, that he has to, if, if we keep this code, that he has to build it in a way that is complementary to what's next door. The problem comes where we also have the downtown overlay, which I don't agree with, but that's a different, separate subject, in that same state and block. So, but if ours would trump that one, because it's more restrictive, that language is already there, that he has to build, he's just looking for a change in the setback requirements because right now, he has to build to the sidewalk, which is a safety issue and ridiculous. Is that right, Fred?
No, so, how, how I, how I read, the, the, the downtown overlay zone tells him that he has to build to the sidewalk.
Yes.
If this tells him that he has to do it, he has to build to the same setback as the neighboring structures.
Right. I got the block.
So, does the, so does the historical code, does that trump, does that over, overtake the other one?
That's-
The more restrictive code applies, which would be the Historic Preservation Code.
Thank you.
Am I correct, Fred?
That's right, I would imagine that that's the gate, I mean, I would always, I mean, I'm sure that we have language in there that talks about that, because that's typically what codes say.
Right. So, we've got one commissioner, we've got one commissioner that is leaning toward tweaking the language and the rest of us are kinda like, leave it alone, is that kinda where we're at?
No.
Oh, okay.
Can we, can you give me a better picture for me? Can we be, if we keep it as is, you're telling me that he has to build where the sidewalk is, basically?
No, no, that's not-
I'm sorry, if we keep it as is, we build to where the first line's up?
Yeah.
And if we go with the, if we modify it or keep the other one, he goes all the way to the streets, but do you, do you wanna go further back with the, the setback than the historic? You wanna go further backward?
No, no, we need to go, we need to go further forward.
Do you still want to go further?
He doesn't want, quite as big a front lawn as mine, but he doesn't wanna go to the sidewalk.
So, the idea is this, right? If you've got two structures, you draw that setback line right across like that and that's where you're supposed to put your third stru, or your next structure, right? And basically, what, what, what we are talking about now is, I should draw a sidewalk in.
Yeah.
There's a sidewalk, right? Ah, nice, huh? There's my sidewalk, see?
Yes.
So, if, if he, so what we're talking about is if there should be any sort of language that allows some variance from this setback line that got established, or if you guys are completely comfortable with that set line, setback line as it is and how the language is written.
So, Jennifer, the way you're looking at it is, is he doesn't want it to be the same setback as your house, he wants to have a shorter backyard, or a shorter front yard area.
Correct.
Right now, it's going to-
Right now, good recommendation, you guys, this is just-
I think this is clarification for her to understand what he's looking for, what, what this, what these things are, so because Dawn missed a meeting, I feel like she's looking for clarification on what Mr. Harris is trying to request, that's how I feel.
Because if we change, if we change the code, then we allow someone to come on in the future and, and come up to us and we can decide where we can have the setbacks. And if we keep the code as is, they have to have the setback further back, which may be inconvenient for him, but it may be more appropriate for the neighborhood, right? Is that right, Fred?
I mean, yeah, that's, it's quite, it's quite possible, there, there might also be situations where it's, it's not ideal, like, I mean, so, I mean, that's, I mean, all of this is part of, part of what, what you folks wanna consider. Let's, let me relook at the language again.
Oh, I gotta ask my question that I had before that I didn't get to ask.
Yes, please.
As far as Ann's asking about adding options or whatever, if we kept the, the half block in the Historic Residential Overlay and later for down the road, when they continue to put up horrible nasty businesses around my house, huh, um, if each business owner, person who decided that they wanted to do these things had to come before us with their plans and say, "Hey, this is what I wanna do," can we make an exception? So, rather than change the language, they can request an exception if it falls within, you know, the parameters that we've set forth for whatever, limited or lessened setback, or, no?
No, there's nothing like-
We'll just have to assume that we're not gonna be on this commission forever and that people with different values may have it, so we wanna set forth a, a, a plan so that people will use this as their guidelines to, to address these things in the future, right? I mean, we kinda wanna take away personal opinion.
That's, that's, that'd be right, and so, no, okay, so-
I mean, like, I probably shouldn't be part of the, like, commission part right now, I should probably be an audience if we wanna take away personal opinions, because this, even though I, you know, I have spoken with Mr. Harris and he and I seem to be, you know, cooperative with each other, I don't know him, he could be lying to my face, I, I don't know, so of course, the things that I'm saying are my opinion based on conversations with him in my front yard.
So, so what, so, um-
I don't think he lied.
Here's what, here's what, what I think it comes down to, is, the way that this is, is written right now is, um, if we wanna keep it the way it is, it's basically black and white, are you at that setback or not? If you're at that setback, you're fine, if you're any closer than the, that, that setback, then no, we can't allow that, that's essentially how it reads right now. The option three, as it's written, allows some additional flexibility and it allows you folks, sort of what Jennifer's saying, the, the flexibility to, to review something and you'll see the standards that have to be evaluated. It says, um, uh, that they may extend in front of the range of setbacks found on the block, so long as this structure incorporates measures such as building articulation, setbacks or courtyards to help transition the structure to the setbacks of the neighboring buildings. So, the idea is to try and figure out ways to actually transition through that building, so, yeah, go for it, Curtis.
I'm gonna play devil's advocate, okay? I'm not talking, I'm not talking Mr. Harris's, uh, his whole plans or anything, I'm talking about the process. If we added flexibility, okay, I'm gonna give you a scenario, you've got somebody that wants to go in and put a property in, if we have black and white standards, they can either do it or not do it, uh, based on the standards. If we allow flexibility, they come before the commission, we deny it, they have appeal rights to the council, where they wouldn't have appeal rights if we make it black and white, if they, right?
Well, they could still-
If you add to that, it's, Curtis is absolutely right. Curtis, I'm sorry, can you guys hear me? Curtis is right, but what, I think what we need to add on to what Curtis just said, which I think is very enlightening, is that someone's gonna come in and, into this, if we don't have it black and white, they're gonna come into this area and then how do we make it so that a multifamily dwelling, commercial building can fit into this area? And if we leave options open, then how do they, I just don't know how someone's personal opinion or money could be, could, would not take a significant seat to what we're trying to do as the Historic Commission. I'm kinda leaning towards making it black and white.
I, I, I'm leaning that way too, I think that we're adding too much, uh, too many, we're, 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 if, by, by tweaking the language to make it, like, flexible, we're making avenues of problems, potential problems.
Yes.
Because if it's black and white, they can either do it or they can't do it, if it's flexible, then it isn't totally up to us, because if we make a decision based on an application, the appeal, the applicant has appeal rights to city council, then it becomes a political decision instead of a zoning decision, or a Historic Preservation Committee decision. And I think that we should avoid possible avenues where we can be subverted, basically.
I agree with Kurt.
I do too.
Does everybody agree that we should not agree with removing the half block?
I think we should just go with option four, right?
Option four.
Option four.
I think, I think we gotta make a motion.
All right.
And make a motion that we go with option four.
Oh, wait.
Just real quick, I mean, I kinda wanna paint the picture of what happens there if, or, I mean, I guess, I guess, I'm sorry, but it's still what I think, but if you go with option four, then the maximum use of that property would be to split it up and build three houses.
No, because that wouldn't be in our zoning, that wouldn't be allowed in our zoning, you would have to go through the zoning-
Not multifamily, it's commercial.
It could absolutely, we allow single houses in our, in our commercial zone.
Yep, so, so, I mean, I guess my point is that you're, you're making the decision that that block will be redeveloped, if it's redeveloped, it's redeveloped with residential, effectively, by the way the code reads that you guys have.
Block is residential, nothing's changed, okay? We can't, we can't talk, we can't talk in hypotheticals, but the fact is, that block is residential, it's purely residential in flavor and, and until that changes, that's what we're looking at.
Well, it can't change if you guys allow the code to go through the way it is, that's what I'm, that's why we're talking about it right now.
But you're looking at it-
And that's, that's kind of, that's kind of the whole philosophy of Historic Preservation, to, to keep our historic structures. Now, you can sell new residential properties in a commercial fashion, you go into a lot of towns near the downtown where they've converted homes into lawyers' offices or doctors' offices and they look exactly like the house, I mean, nothing's changed, they're the, they're the historic house, but they're, they're repurposed for a different use other than residential. And that's a, that's kinda what we're looking at, we discussed this, we looked at several blocks, this half block, we looked at that, the, uh, the whole, uh, that block that Fred showed that had an empty lot, we also, the backside of that, on Third Street and also on Seventh Street. We talked about this extensively and to, to do anything else would promote the destruction of our, of our historic properties, it would actually promote it. I know that you feel otherwise and that's why you're here and, and, but it's kinda contrary to all the discussion we've had for the last year. And I think at this point, we've heard, it was a very good presentation, I get what you're saying, and what you're saying is a possible future, but it's not the future that we're trying to strive towards. And I think at this point, we should make it, make a recommendation to planning and we should state very clearly why we're making that recommendation, so that it's not just, this is what we want, we should, we should make a recommendation, say, this is why we're saying this.
I agree with Kurt.
I do too.
I don't.
You do not? What do you-
I don't think you guys can see out my window, I think it's too bright. The, the house where, that Mr. Harris just bought, I'm sure, I, I've lived in my house now for six years. Prior to that, the previous owner, Mr. Collins and his brother, have owned that house for close to 30 years or 30 plus years, I don't remember what the dates were exactly, and they let it go and it is a mess and, um, I, whether it's with my neighbor Janine, who lives in a, another historic home, and there was a business downstairs when we all first moved in, I don't know what it was, but there was a business downstairs in her house and she runs a business there now, um, or my house, or the house next door, none of them sit at exactly the same setback. This, the house on Mr. Harris's lot, I think sits further back than ours, just a smidge, but it does. And, uh, he has seemed to me to be willing to be respectful of what we're trying to keep here. My house, I have no plans for my house to go anywhere in the next 100 years, my kids love my house, I'll live here and they'll live here and then their kids may live here after that, so my house will be here for a long time. Janine's house will probably be here for a long time, if we can put something next door that is complementary, I don't have a problem with it sitting a little bit further forward, but I think if we're super black and white, then what kind of, I mean, I don't know, I just don't, I, is that house gonna do then? Sit there and rot because the previous owner let it? He incurred-
I just don't think that's the only option, I just don't think that's the only option. I mean, we're looking at it as if, if this setback doesn't occur, then nothing can be developed on that house, that's not what we're saying, we're just saying that we're, we wanna follow the codes that we've been fighting to have, to preserve the historic areas of our community and I, I just-
I think option three does that. Because option three still requires him to build in a way that is complementary to my house.
Um, I have a technical issue that I need to address, um, I've got to get up, I had no idea this meeting was gonna last this long, my battery is going dead, I've gotta get up and get a power cord, so I'm gonna walk away, I'll be right back.
Right.
Well, you know, we don't have to do anything except just say, we're gonna take option four right now and then have some more meetings and decide, kind of-
But the code is gonna, I mean, the, I mean, here's the thing, the planning commission is like, gonna make a decision, they wanna make a decision on this.
And they wanna-
And, and, and what kind of decision are they gonna make? I mean, if we say that we wanna, if, if we said that we wanted to keep the block and, you know, what kind of decision are they gonna make, say, no way and this is what we're gonna allow?
Well, I think that is the option, not, not that specific thing, it's, it's the options that's gonna cover throughout history, it's, it's part of the code, they want our recommendation as to what we wanna see done.
Right.
Well, yeah, but, um, kinda like, option four says, this is what we decided based on a year of meetings and everything and we're not changing our mind, I, I, you know, is that correct?
I mean, I can't speak for the commission, so, one thing I'll just, I'll just try and articulate too, is, we shouldn't just look at this setback and things like courtyards or building articulation in isolation, I mean, if we look higher in the new construction in the historic district, it talks specifically about how that articulation is supposed to occur. So, you're gonna have more standards to actually evaluate how these setbacks are being met. This is exactly what we were trying to do with the code, is actually try and specify in a clear way what, what we're actually anticipating when redevelopment occurred. So, just, just to add that in there, like, if we just look in isolation at the setback language itself, it might say, "Oh yeah, we wanna keep it kinda black and white," but there, there are standards up above, so let's just say, somebody came out like this and then just did a little bit of building articulation or a setback back like that to transition, you folks could then say, "No," because there's no way that that building articulation matches what is actually going on next door, because remember, the code itself has, and it's in your packet, and the image is not gonna be good, but- specific images to help sort of depict how that articulation- specific images to help sort of depict how that articulation is supposed to occur.
And the language is also too, because like, uh, 59.80 C2 says, the structure is of similar size and scale of surrounding buildings, and as much as possible reflects the craftsmanship of those buildings. So, even if he has a smaller front yard than me, he's still going to be required to make whatever he builds there, if it's business on the bottom and housing above, be respectful of the neighborhood. And I, I feel like, as a historic preservation committee, no, it's not an old building, and yeah, that sucks. But if he's required to make it appear to be an older building.
How many feet are we talking about here? I, I mean, on his, on his exact property, how many feet are we arguing over?
I don't know.
I think we're not actually talking about that case. I think we're talking about a re, a recommendation to the planning commission about what we want done.
Well, because I'm trying to decide if we're going to go to option three, I can tangibly see this example and how it's going to work. So, if, if, if I can look at this option under the lens of option three, or look at this as, and.
Hypothetically, she's asking a hypothetical, which I think is, is a fair question.
So, if, if we keep it as is, let's just pretend that the historic society has a 15-foot setback. So, and the, the commercial overlay has a zero-foot setback. So, we would never go to the zero-foot setback, even if we do option three or four anyway. So, what we're saying is, if we go to option three, he could have a setback of 10 feet instead of 15 feet, or anywhere in between there, we would just need to decide it, which we've never been really successful in winning those things, anyway. And number four, if he has to have the setback where it's 15 feet, hypothetically, that's what matches that area, correct? So, he would have to do what matches historically. We're talking about just a few feet. The, I think Jennifer's concern of it being trumped as a commercial overlay isn't going to happen. He's not going to be able to build to the front if we go with option three or four.
That's correct.
The power we get with option four is remove the ability to make a huge mistake, I feel, because we, we've set the black and white standard for how we have to have this setback in relationship with those pictures that Fred has shown. That's, that's already what we've decided, is that we, that they have to be appropriate with the, the neighborhood and the scale. I'm not sure what we're even arguing about now, because there's, there's no way we're going to have, I think what Jennifer's worried about is the building built up to the sidewalk, because it, we, we're not going to, I would like to say, we're not going to remove that block from the historic commission. It needs to fall into that guideline. If we keep that guideline, then the setback is going to be what is in the area, and that's, and that's, I think, what Jennifer wants, and I think that's what we all want for historic preservation.
Yes.
I still say go with option four.
But Mr. Harris has said that he's, can't build if we take option four, is that correct?
Uh, effectively, a commercial mixed-use building would not work on that property.
So, what, what, so if you're already looking at that, what setback are you looking for?
Uh, well, we were trying to, we were trying to talk about a setback that would work for Jennifer to make, you know, that, just like the language already says, that it, you know, it.
She's asking for a number, not a, not a vague, vague statement.
We've done this before, where people come in with the best of intentions and best of hearts, and then it just doesn't ever work out. So, for me, I like to be able to say, okay, this is what the code is, this is what we're relying on to get us to this next step. So, it sounds like you want to build in between where the historic society wants you to build, and where the commercial buildings want you to build. And then, now what we're doing is, we're being vague on where you want to do that. And so then, for me, that puts up another, what does this mean? We're being vague on where we want to build.
Except that he, given his, his planning or plans or whatever, like, he still has to go through all that planning commission stuff, and this is where, like, uh, you know, even if we, if we went with option three and said, okay, we're, there's going to be some flexibility, he still has to go to the planning commission, and the zoning commission, and all these other commissions, and give his plans, and then they have to be approved. So, Fred, that Fred, does, after he goes to those, then they have to come to us? I don't know. That's where I'm kind of a little like, and where Dawn's saying, we don't have a number, we can't be vague.
So, his, his project would have to go through you guys, and you would evaluate his project based on these standards, and you would get exactly what I do for, for projects. So, we go through every area.
So, if we go with option three, he'd still have to come back to us first and give us a number?
Yeah, absolutely.
But here, here's, here's, here's the key difference.
Yes.
If we set it black and white, there's no appeal option on that number, okay? And it, it stays in the historic preservation's hands. If we make it a vague option, and we deny an application, the appeal goes to city council, it becomes a political decision at that point. Okay?
I think he's exactly right. That's the key point.
That, that's the big difference between the two, is the appeal process available to an applicant. And I think that we're doing historic preservation a, a big disservice, not to put it in black and white standards.
Um, but I have, I have a question, Brad. I have a question. Um, on, on the options that you developed, two of them are remove, and two of them are keep about the block, the half block. Um, where did that thinking come from? Um, does that come from the planning commission? Like, you can either keep this block and do it like this, or you have to remove it? I mean, why did?
They were all developed by me based on a spectrum of my thinking. I, I don't make decisions, I provide alternatives, and it seemed to me that was the widest array of alternatives that I could provide. So, one is the most, one is the, uh, the most accommodating for, for what, uh, for commercial development on the site, that's the remove. And one is the least accommodating for a commercial development on the site, on the site, that's keep it in the, in the historic, uh, historic residential overlay, um, zone. So, that was my thinking, and you'll see in the middle is just tweaks to setback language, um, sort of, to reflect what Mr. Harris was, um, uh, one of his main concerns. So.
Well, then if we turn around and say to the, um, planning commission, we have option four, it's going to stay exactly the same as what we said. I mean, can they turn around and say, uh-uh?
Yeah. Yeah, because, you know, they, um, and, or the council could. I mean, you know, because all of this is, I mean, it, it comes down to the basic tension that I identified at the very onset of this. There's a tension between the two, um, desires of, of our development code. One desire says we want commercial development in this area. The other desire says we want historic preservation in this area. There, um, there's, there's sort of a tension, um, and.
And I feel like that's why option three is the best, because it's a, it's a compromise between those two intentions. And.
Yeah, but Curtis is saying then, by option three, you get wafty about this. Then, you know, he's basically saying that, um, you know, they can't, somebody cannot appeal our decision using option four, but they can using option three. In other words, we can do all of it. What?
Except Fred was just saying that, that the planning commission can say, yeah, nah, and that.
Only, only at this stage.
Only at this. And.
Yeah.
And so, so, yes, I'll just say, I'll provide the counterargument, and then I think we've pretty much kicked this thing around, like, pretty good, and I think that everybody's sort of in their position, so I almost think that we can, um, we can continue on. Uh, but what, what I'll just say is, yeah, it would be black and white, absolutely. Um, but you also would never have a chance to say yes to something that was potentially complementary. Like, I mean, that's what this language would essentially do, is you have no option to say yes.
But we do have an option to say yes, because it, it, there's nothing standard on that block that Jennifer is proposing. So, we're going to have to look at everything to say, okay, well, you know, this setback on this house is 15 feet, the other setback is 18 feet, what, what makes sense for this house? We, that, we do have that option.
The way that the code reads is you find the average between the both of them, and you say, okay, the setback is 16 and a half feet. So, you have to set it 16 and a half feet. That's what, that's what.
It says there's a range.
Yes, Tom.
It doesn't say the average, it says the range.
Within the range of setbacks. Okay, so, yeah, so, then it could be no less than 15 feet or whatever.
And no more than 18 or whatever.
I mean, that does give us some flexibility. I'm just concerned, I'm picturing myself on Jennifer's front porch, and I'm looking to my right, and if we don't have the setback in that range that fits into our historical code, anybody who comes to develop that property could, could potentially put it all the way up to a commercial building. I mean, they could. I, I wouldn't want Jennifer to have a house that has the, the commercial building all the way up there, but if we leave that flexibility and someone overpowers us when our code is finally put into place, then, you know, anybody on that block could, it's going to make more sense for a business to build as much square footage as they possibly can. That just makes sense. So, what we have to do is, on a historical society, is say, okay, let's fall back to option four, which is the range that makes sense. That does give us flexibility in the fact that we can, okay, so we're looking at between 15 and an 18-foot setback, instead of a range of a zero-foot setback to a 20-foot setback. I say we just go with option four. And, I, I love how this plan's come together, I loved how hard we've worked on it. I think there is some flexibility in it. I, I don't think it's as much flexibility as option three gives us, but I think if we're going to keep this residential area and historic area, we should stick with option four.
Would, uh, the chair entertain a motion at this point?
We have to say to the planning commission that we want to stand our ground, basically, right, Fred? I mean, that's what we have to tell them, that this is, you know, is that right? Okay.
That's, that's completely appropriate.
Okay.
Would the chair entertain a motion at this point?
Absolutely.
I move that we recommend to the planning commission, uh, that we keep the half block in question in the, uh, historic residential overlay, and, uh, do not change the proposed wording. Uh, I would, and I would like to, uh, to write that opinion up, to forward to them, and also mention there were a couple dissenting opinions that we should tweak the language.
That we should tweak the language?
No, that there were dissenting opinions that we.
I just want to, I want to, I, I, I move that we, we do option four, and that I provide a, a formal recommendation, but also include in that recommendation, include any dissenting opinions, or.
Yes.
Even the minority opinion, like, almost like a court would, would do, maybe have a dissenting opinion with it. I don't know.
Do you, well, I mean, let's, I think we should take the vote first, I'm not, I'm not sure if we have a.
Yeah, yeah, that's probably, that's probably the best thing. Let's just add on the motion for, at first. So, I move that we, we go with option four.
Okay.
I second the motion.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Do a roll call.
Any opposed?
Nay.
I oppose.
All right.
Anne and Jennifer are opposed, Karen.
Jennifer.
Anne and Jennifer are opposed, thank you.
And, but, can we say that we recommend some tweaking? Or, how did you say?
Part of the motion.
Well, let's, well, the motion passed, and now we can talk about the, the.
wording, okay.
The formal recommendation we sent to the, the planning commission. And I think it, my suggestion is either, I can write up a, an opinion and mention the dissenting opinions, or I can write up the majority opinion, somebody else could write up the minority opinion.
Well, I go to the planning commission meetings now too, because this concerns me, so I'll be there to give that my dissenting opinion.
Jennifer, do you, do you really feel that the option four is negative towards your home?
Um, I, I. So, I work in special ed, right? That's my job, my, my big girl job. And what do I do all day? I make accommodations for people with special needs, right? Not calling you special needs, Mr. Harris, that's not what I'm talking about here.
But, yeah.
But, the, the building next door to mine is definitely a special needs building at this point. Um, and I am willing to make accommodations so that the building next to mine is complementary to my own. And, um, if there's already language that states that he can't build some butt-ugly boxes, like are being built across the street from my house.
Yeah.
Then I'm, that is more important to me than where it sits on the sidewalk. And, um, I think safety-wise, there's not going to be a time at which they're going to okay it being at the zero property line, because my driveway is right there. I could run into any kid riding his bike down the street or down the sidewalk, which they're not supposed to do anyway, but do all the time. You know, that'd be ridiculous. So, accommodating is what I do at work, and I am willing to, as I've gotten older, I have become more willing to make accommodations, um, and listen to other sides. So, with, with the other language in place, that the building that he puts there has to be complementary to the homes on the block, and it can't look like the nonsense across the street, I'm okay with him building it a little further forward. That's just my opinion.
Okay.
And I, my opinion basically is that, um, I, I don't want the, um, half-block removed from any part of her.
I wouldn't want her removed either.
So, everyone agrees it shouldn't be, the residential overlay shouldn't be removed.
Right.
And, and four of us decided that the, the language should remain the same, too. Dissented, do you want me to write up a recommendation that, that reflects all that?
I think that would be good.
You're good with those words.
Thank you. Hey, Kurt.
All right. So, what's next?
So, I got one more thing that I want to, uh, address before we get out of here. And it's related to this code change again. Um, so, I've been looking at historic trees, and you folks know I've been looking at historic trees, right? And so, as I'm looking at the historic trees, I realized that we have a couple of them on sites that are completely vacant, and if somebody redevelops the site in the future, or if somebody puts a building on the site, it's quite possible that those historic trees are going to come down, or that somebody's going to ask for those historic trees to come down. As the code is written right now, the, the code only allows the removal of historic trees if a certified arborist finds that the tree is a hazard, or that, um, it's damaging a commercial or residential structure. In certain instances, that might not be the case on some of these sites that I'm, that I'm looking at. Um, so, I guess my, my question for you is, um, should the language be a little more flexible than that right, right there, or you think? I just, literally, I realize I'm springing this on you, uh, but.
Flexible in what way?
What's that?
Flexible in what way?
If there's no, if there's no structure on the property, and there's a historic tree, there's no way that it can be taken down if it's healthy, is what he's saying. So, I think you should add a third option to those first two options, that if the, if the property is vacant, that, uh, that, that that can be considered in an application.
Right. So, here's, I, let me, I just took a crack at the, the language. I sort of included similar language as the demolition language, um, in the code. Can you folks see this?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Says to approve the removal of a historic tree in the City of Independence via IDC, whatever, the Historic Preservation Commission must find that a certified arborist has shown the tree is a hazard, or the tree is causing damage to a commercial or residential structure, or there is a demonstrated public need for the proposed new use or development on the site that don't bring any benefit that might be gained by preserving the subject trees. What do you think of that language?
Um, could you add something?
Yeah.
Um, I think that anytime anybody proposes to take down a tree, they have to plant four new trees minimum in the city.
No, the, the problem with this is it goes back to the tree that's in the middle of the street on, what, B Street? I can't imagine anybody there not saying that that, that there's a demonstrated need. If, if anybody came and said, okay, have a sidewalk there is more important than the tree, and then that tree would be removed. And that's the whole thing about keeping these historic trees. I mean, I understand what you're saying there, there's a development. But to that language that you just introduced is so huge that
It is.
there, there, there's no point in saving any tree now, because there's no way to save it, because all someone has to do is say, okay, this sidewalk is more important than this tree. Well, yeah, yeah, it would be nice to have a sidewalk, but, you know, the, the trees in here are.
Removed. I, I just don't.
It, it would take a majority decision by the commission to remove the tree. And if the way.
With that, I can agree with that. If there, if, if there could be a, a majority consensus on.
That's what, that's what Fred is suggesting, that it would be, it would be like a demolition.
Okay.
It'd be like.
But, yeah. Yeah, but my, my suggestion is for people to know upfront, if they want to remove something, that they have to pu- plant new trees when they're taking something down.
The thing is, is I appreciate that, and I think that's wonderful, but you, there's no way you're going to be able to plant a 200-year-old tree.
No, I'm not saying a 200-year-old tree. Yeah, I say.
I just want to be able to, to make sure that, you know, I want somebody to be able to build a home or build something on a, on a piece of vacant land, but to have the language saying that if there's a public need that is greater than a tree, then just go ahead and remove the tree, because then the prime example of the Henry Hill tree on B Street or C Street is just gone. And that's kind of why we have the historic tree preservation in there anyway. But if Kurt is right, and that we would have to take a vote on it to make sure it made sense, then I, I can agree to that.
It's a type-two process, yeah. So, I mean, it would come before you folks. It would require a public hearing, all that stuff.
It just allows the option, Dawn, that's all. If, if, it's mainly, the reason he's putting it in there is say there's a vacant property with a historic tree, and it can't be developed without taking the tree down. I mean, that would show a public need, and I think the commission would go for it. I don't think that.
Maybe.
I don't think you need to worry about any kind of trees you're talking about.
I'm just, I'm sensitive on the trees, because, you know, the City of Independence just recently wanted to take down every single tree in Pioneer Park, because a branch may potentially fall. And, you know, I was one of those people that was trying to, you know, stop that from happening. I'm sensitive.
So do we need to make a motion on this, Fred?
If you would, I would appreciate it.
I move to add the language that Fred suggested regarding the, uh, historic trees to the code.
Do you have a second?
Could you say the language again, Fred?
Yeah, I'll share the screen again. Hold on.
Are historic trees next door?
There's no historic trees next door, but it was across the street, those maples across the street from you that got me thinking about it.
Where Carlos and Debbie's properties are?
Yeah, right next to it.
Yeah, I think that's theirs too, though.
Yeah.
But on here, this, that we will vote, that it has to come before the historic commission for consideration?
That says, that says type procedure at the top.
Okay.
So we're adding the language in red?
Right.
Right.
Okay. Um, yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Oh. Is everybody voted? Can't tell. Any opposed? Looks like the motion is passed. Carried. Um, so do we have any, any other unfinished business? Does that come next?
I wanted to, to mention something on a personal note. I had mentioned I would be leaving the commission soon with the coronavirus going on, that those plans have been postponed indefinitely.
Yay for us.
No, yay for us. Such a happy thought.
Sorry, Kurt.
I'm happy to have you around, Curtis.
Okay, any new business first? Yeah.
I think we go have dinner. Go on, Margaret.
Okay. Any other discussion on, any other items?
I have one other discussion item with, I, I guess I just need to get with Fred sometime. On, there's still so much to clean up on that map of the trees.
Yeah.
And I don't know if that intern is still working for you.
He's not, but I've been looking at the tree list, and I'm gonna, if you want to walk around with me sometime, I would love to do that, because there's certain trees on the list that I cannot find. And like, I look at some of them, and I, I, I honestly don't know what I'm looking at. And, um, so, yeah, I'd love to talk with you about it. Like, I went through this map, and I tweaked a, a couple of things, but I, I mean, I think I've pretty much exhausted everything that I can find of that list. I took a picture of everything, too. Um, but I have a couple of questions.
Just make sure you walk six feet apart.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll talk. I'll get ahold of you separately to go over some things on that then.
I would like to be included in there, too, the historic trees. I'm a member of the Audubon Society, and I'm an also, I OSHU master gardener. So I think I could contribute.
Cool. That's great.
All right. Well, we're free to adjourn then.
Good.
All right.
Good seeing everybody.
Yeah.
Adios.
Adios.
Bye.
Turn.
Sayonara.
So many buttons.
How do I get out of here?
Leave.
I, let's X the tab, Anne.